Lord, thank you for this day you've given us and thank you for the rain you've brought away, Lord. Be with us as we conduct this meeting, Lord. Help us to do it according to your will, Lord. Be with us this week. Lead God and direct us. Christ, I'm praying. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance today to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
That's going to drive Angela nuts and clear.
I've already heard. I already, I haven't, I know what it is.
It's background noise now. All right. At this time, any person with business before the court was scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action taken on these items at this meeting. Each speech will be limited to three minutes. However, I'm going to give Kathy some grace because this is my fault that this is not on the agenda. It will be on the agenda for Friday, though. By the way, we have a meeting Friday at 10:00 a.m.
And I told him I would be more than happy to come back because I'm actually working from home after tomorrow. And of course, right close to stuff like that.
So can't ask any questions about this, but hold it. Write your questions down. Hold it for Friday.
Do you need a copy of first?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
We discussed this about a month ago.
Yes, we knew the renewal was going to be coming out. And it did come out. It was sent on Thursday. However, it was after the agenda for today had to be posted. And honestly, whenever we're looking at this renewal, the pool needed amount was 4.6% for this year. Scory County is actually, for one of the first times in several years, getting under that pool needed amount. With our December and January groups, because they are later in the year after the board meets and start setting rates, they always look at those two sets of groups before the renewals go out. And this actually worked in Scory County's favor. Because whenever we came and did, the mid-year review was right around the time that they were setting the rates for the October 1 groups. And y'all were looking at about a 5%. And what impacts that is a lot, and I mean a lot, of your high-cost claimants roll off within that four-month time period. And that really did help y'all out. And this is the detail in there. The first tab is the actual renewal, listing out what the rates are. It was a 2.5% increase on the medical for the same plan and a 2.5% increase, and this was everybody that participates with the dental. We have started seeing an increase whenever, in utilization, whenever we adopted the voluntary dental plans and increased some of those benefits. We've seen a huge increase in utilization. Not going to complain, that just means people weren't taking care of their teeth. Which, if been to any of our wellness programs, a lot of the issues that you have within your body come from back to you. So, and honestly, mouth infection can actually lead to massive heart issues. So, it's really important that we do that. The next tab in that packet that I gave you is, we always list out two to three alternate plans that the county could choose from. And this is what that is with the rates, if the county opted to make any changes. I did some quick just calculations on what your current rate is, not what the increase, what the current rate is, and with these alternate plans, just to see if it would benefit the county on possibly making a move. And whenever we say make a move, nine times out of 10, it's going to be increasing those deductibles of maximum power pockets on the employees. The more you increase that, it does bring the cost of the plan down. Based on my quick calculations, it's not going to benefit y'all to make a plan change with those three options. Just if you doubled the deductible, went from the $1,500 deductible to the $3,000 deductible, it's $69 per employee per month. And what we would suggest is if you made a move like that, then you do an in-house reimbursement plan where you reimburse the employee at least a portion of that increase. That's not going to give you the savings to be able to do that. We get asked about the, you know, what's kind of middle of the road for our groups. That 1,500 to 2,000 is, it's gotten to where that is middle of the road for insurance plans for Texas counties. We have seen more groups move to the HSA plans than we have in the last two years. And if you've got employees who aren't used to HSA plans, they're hard to get going at first. Just a lot of hard feelings to do with it. So, based on my knowledge and y'all's plan, it would not be my recommendation to make any plan changes for this year. Maybe if, you know, we have to hold off, let's do it. But for a 2.5% increase, that's really not bad. The next couple of sheets behind the alternates is kind of detailed reports on how your claims are actually running. And this goes through the end of July. We have not gotten, we have not received August data yet. Now, keep in mind, I have seen really, really bad years for Scory County. In the last 12 months, you only had two months that went over the 100% loss ratio. That means y'all are running right at the break-even point. And in the last couple of months, you're actually under that. And our break-even point is anywhere from 95 to 97%. And that's about where y'all are running. The high-cost claimants report, and all, this is what that looks like. Even two years ago, two, three years ago, whenever I was here, we were looking at multiple cancer claimants. That is no longer the case. Actually, one has rolled off recently. And actually, they took that into consideration. You do have one new claimant. And that's just kind of to see where that heads. The majority of that claim is on the medical side. There are a couple of things, a couple of diagnoses on that report. A, regardless, like your top two claimants, those type of diagnoses are always going to run expensive. It starts out, they're nine times out of 10, they're really hard to diagnose. So there's a lot of medical claims. Then they, you know, once it's diagnosed, it goes into the treatment phase. But with both of those two diagnoses, the littlest thing can throw them out of whack. And the second one, whenever it gets out of whack very seriously, it's always going to have a hospital stay attached to it. I mean, that's just, that's just the nature of those two. I did look at, as far as your top claimant, you have another one of those. The second one is new, like within the last two, three months. And it is that situation, they've gone through the diagnostic testing, it has been diagnosed, so now they'll start the treatment phase. We'll start to see the medical and the pharmacy start to shift. Luckily with it, we won't see a huge increase on the pharmacy side till hopefully a couple of years down the road. It's just, it progressively gets worse over time. I did notice you were down with the number of rheumatoid arthritis claims. That is good to hear because rheumatoid arthritis medications is one, right now, one of the most expensive medications on the market. They're triple what any of the diabetic medications are running. It's just grossly expensive. It's nothing unusual for one medication to run us $100,000 a month. So, you know, that's, they're just really, really expensive. But to make it even better, I went through, ten years past, we've had, you know, ten, we could count on our hands, ten major heart issues within the county. I counted three. Three major diabetic claims. That's way down than what it has been over the last couple of years. So what I'm, whenever I look at, because also in this, there's a lot of screening claims. Screening claims, yes, they do, it's a claim. However, it's a low-cost claim compared to the catastrophic, and we don't account for those the same way. It looks like, whenever we just do a quick glance at this, do a little bit of a dive into the claims, not just overly like Stacy normally does, it's really looking like the employees are starting to take these programs more serious and they're starting to get engaged more than they ever have been and starting to take, starting to take control more of their health issues. So those are all good signs because the purpose of those is to keep those catastrophic claims at bay. And then the last part of it is the wellness program portion. So the first form under that tab is just listing out who you want the contacts to be. And the second form is another decision y'all will need to make, is y'all currently have a county-specific incentive. And it's if employees go get an annual physical, they get their choice of one PTO date or $50 gift card. And if you want to keep it like that, or if you want to reimagine, do something a little different with the county-specific incentive. And that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
All right.
Let me know if you're going to have any questions for Kathy for Friday. See if she needs to come back.
I have two things that are not on the agenda. They came after the agenda was set to do a tab.
Okay.
The claims that we had on the annex and then on the health unit, the health unit, which one? This one? Was the, one of them was the earthquake. It said, we didn't meet the deductible, the deductible was 25,000, it was only 6,000 and something. And they also didn't think that it was actually caused by earthquake. The other one was the flood damage to the annex. They are sending a check for $8,646.63, which is less than $5,000 deductible. And they are also trying to go to Culligan to get back at least the deductible portion of that and maybe mitigate some of that expense. And then I have the claim files for, the utility files, of course, that just got, they got everything confirmed on that on Friday. So I don't have any update on that one.
The annex is on the agenda for Friday to discuss. Took it off because we didn't have that information for today until shortly after the agenda came out. So why keep putting it on there? Thank you. Thank you, Kathy.
All right.
Appreciate you being here.
All right, just let me know about Friday.
I sure will. Watch that thing, wrote through.
Oh, I'm headed up to Del Heart. They haven't gotten the plane. We've gotten here.
All right, enter precinct project scheduling staff in.
I have something on that. I need spreadsheets. I've been working on the project stuff last week. I have all of the invoices put in, but I need spreadsheets from four, from all three of your projects that you turned in. I need those spreadsheets. And then I also need to know, I sent an email out, if you could just reply to me only, do not reply all, or let me know which are completed out of all of the projects. I put a list of them, what I show we have completed and what's in process right now. I need to get this stuff submitted pretty soon so we can get some of that back this year. So we can get that since I can't look on rudes.
Who was it that was speaking at the legislative session that was discussing that program? That they were talking about doing it again in the next legislative session, restarting that grant?
Yeah, but the one that's over the legislative process, I cannot think of his name either.
Yeah.
But yeah, he said that, in fact, it's on the Texas website, how much money we still have out except for the invoices that have not been submitted, or something like 700,000 that we still have on the books. And I'm sure there's quite a bit of that that's still not been invoiced yet that you have and waiting on.
The one that I'm going to submit, once I get everything, it's a large one.
Yeah.
Because it has three projects from precinct four, it has two from precinct two, has one finishes block line, I think, at precinct two, three. I don't think you have any on this one, on this submission, but, I mean, there's quite a few on there. I just need the, I mean, I have all the invoices and I've just got to pull the check stubs to go with those, but then I need the spreadsheet so I can enter in the hours and the equipment. And that equipment rate is driving that up big time because what was on the last time when I did them was like maybe $48, it's $123 now. It's a huge equipment rate difference. So let's get it before they figure that out, change it. The other thing on that renewal, I know that the one thing that I do remember from last time when we renewed, it was what, SB 1476, I think was what it was, or 1446, I don't remember. But whenever you got to renew again for this one, they said if you did not spend your allocated money, then they're not going to consider you. So we need to spend the allocated money so we can get considered.
Yeah, and that's something that Rick with Allison Bass has been pushing for a few years, is make sure and spend all of your money. And I give you a prop, y'all really stepped up the last couple of years and got the projects done, and that's really an asset. So thank you for doing that.
Finally, you kind of was able to get a rock.
Yeah.
There was no rock, right? You know, so finally was able to get that. So that made all the difference.
Good. What else y'all have?
I told my guy to stay at home and get some of that downtime down.
Yeah.
Because, you know, thing in the world that can hit this point unless, you know, pull people out of a ditch or a, the fire department called while I was coming upstairs and some guy hydroplaned out into the median, out of 84, and needed somebody to come pull it down. That's about all we could see from that.
Splitting the blood. My God, calls morning, 41, 45, 46?
Forty-one something.
41, 46. There is a trash truck stuck on that road and it is in the ditch.
From the like Allen Henry case?
The dogs are all brighter, told, wait a little bit, raining. I was like, a plan to me. I said, have a watch out there with it. I said, I always would pass the law.
You don't need one room.
You dumped your helmet, right?
Get it proved to somewhere else.
Talking circuit.
Speaking of that, you really want to watch your roads. I had a company to put a dumpster right over, said, you're coming over the hill, there it is. And I went and talked to the homeowner. I said, I said, you know, you wouldn't slow signs here on both sides of this hill because people are going too fast, and then you allow a guy to set a dumpster right at the edge of the road. Somebody's going to call the hill, the dumpster, trust them to be there and head on. And so I made them move it, they didn't like it.
You were supposed to be on private property.
We allow it on some of these roads, but they're white, I mean, you can see them from a long way out. Well, that right there was, I couldn't believe it, that do that.
Okay, now we will move on to, unless y'all have anything else. We'll move on to new business county elections administrator and order creating election administrator designation of office space. I've got the order here, says we'd understand, and this is one of the requirements, is that we have to have this. We'd understand being the membership of the Commissioners' Court for Scory County due to our or possession of county election administrator created for said county effective on January 1, 2025. County clerks hereby instructed to send a copy of this order to each member of the County Elections Commission, Secretary of State, Controller of Public Accounts. And in the elections code, the Elections Commission is County Judge, County Clerk, County Tax Assessor, County Chair for each political party that made nominations by primary election. And that is it. And so with this, if it's approved today, we will meet, see what requirements for that position, post that position, and then do interviews for that position. And...
Y'all will be both in this position?
Yes.
When I was in class, I don't know what the cost of this is to create this office and get the party charter and everything that you need there. While I was in class, they brought up a point that someone had been able to get a senator to bring forth a somewhat like it did in Galveston with treasurer, and they were able to abolish the office of treasurer in Galveston. Now, they have been able also to abolish election administrator in one county, and they're talking about trying now, this next session, to eliminate all voting administrators.
Those had to be put on the ballot and voted on?
That...
That's what Judge Trump always said, was that those had to be put on the ballot, like...
And you know what's so weird about that is it was on our ballot, we had to vote on that. And it's Galveston County, why do we care what Galveston County does, but we had to vote on it?
It affects all counties in a way because treasurers could be eliminated in every county. And so they're trying to, I guess, find out what the feel of the people are concerning treasurer's office. So, you know, I have no problem.
So who does the, who does the work for the treasurer? If they eliminate the office?
Exactly. But like, I think, the court, like, almost like you would do payroll now.
Well, the court would say.
Yeah.
The court would do the payroll.
The auditor's office still does the functions of the auditor's office, but the court has the authority then to authorize who does payroll or who does payables and stuff. That's what the court would do at that point.
The thing about an election administrator, it is not an elected office.
No.
And so probably, or evidently, it didn't have to be put on the ballot.
It says in here in that, that the Commissioners' Court
Yeah.
can make the decision.
But if they eliminate all of them, we've done all of this for nothing.
Yeah.
We spent the money for the furniture, for whatever you need in that office, and it gets abolished and we just spent the money for no reason.
Oh, see, it happened.
I didn't see the treasurer getting eliminated either, but she did, or he did, or the office did, or whatever.
Yeah.
The idea behind the election administrator is to take it out from underneath them like a official. It gives it, that way there's no...
It gives the appearance of more integrity.
Yes.
I mean, by one.
You can't, it's less likely to be swayed one way or the other.
I agree. I have no problem with creating it at all, but if you're going to spend a bunch of money for no reason, you've just lost everything that you was wanting to do. And people are wanting this to go back into an elected official's office. Is what they were saying, and they were able, in that county, to abolish that office.
Yeah.
And now they're trying to abolish it in all.
Right. My hope is that it wouldn't go that direction.
That'd be my hope as well, but are you willing to spend the money to...
Well, one thing about it, as far as the money, Terry, I'm not doing another employee. I'm not replacing her. So we're not, I'm not, you're not making this position and then also having to hire another person.
No, but you are having to buy the things she needs for that office.
We're splitting a lot of stuff. Stuff she uses, I don't have another employee coming, so I don't need that desk. I don't need those computers. All that's going with that. Stuff that we already have is going with it.
And so if it gets abolished, you just bring it back?
We'll just bring it back to the county and give the employee back.
Stuff that other places have that we would be considering to use instead of purchasing.
Yeah, we're scrounging.
So I don't have to have...
What is the cost that you're looking at to be able to create this? To get this done?
I don't remember what it was. It wasn't much, because like I said, just the increase in her salary, basically. And for right now, until there is another, she's going to, we requested that it be located in my office. So there's no office space, there's no other utilities, there's nothing.
So there is room in your office for this? Because we were talking about...
We would, I mean, eventually, when the EMS gets their building, since the machines are down there, yes, would like, it would be beneficial to move it down there again, though, it's no new office space, it's no new, it's being used and utilized anyway.
Yeah.
So it's already been spent, the money's already been spent.
Are you talking about in the office that they're in now?
Mm-hmm. The one, the training facility. That's armored.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's armored. So everything is already being...
I have no problem doing it. I think it's a good thing to do it, but I want to make sure that
Yeah.
we're not just going out here one year, doing something that's costing the taxpayer quite a bit of money and then having to bring it back.
I think the difference was about 20 to 25,000.
Yeah.
So on the designation of office space, it's going to be on the third floor of the courthouse?
At this time, yeah. Because I don't know how long it takes to, for that, if that is an option that y'all will look okay in the future, don't know how long that's going to take to get the new one built. Year, two years, you know? We have more, you know, we get in the middle of progress like right now, we have rings like we've had the last few days, they won't be on the court anymore. But until then, yes, there's room in my office and we can make it work.
Yeah. Because he's not doing any classes right now because he doesn't have an education coordinator, so he's not even really using that space.
He did say that if we wanted to move, that he would make it work if we wanted to move beginning...
January 1.
But what are you talking about, putting that on in the next legislative session or...
That's what they're talking about, because they were successful in the last one. That's just what, I have no idea.
Which would have to come up from the commission, from that county, right? I mean, the county would have to be the one to put it on ballot. So it'd have to be y'all to...
Wouldn't be on, wouldn't be on ballot necessarily.
Because that's what they did with that treasurer, they put it on a ballot for the whole state to vote on.
Whoever got this done to begin with, the ones that were trying to push it further, they just seemed like getting it done in one county and then they're going to spread it out to all counties, is what this person...
Right, like there's a bill that says that the elections administrator will be in the county clerk's office or under the county clerk, something along those lines.
Yeah.
Throughout the state.
Throughout the state.
That's kind of the impression that I'm under.
They said that they abolished the election administrator office, period. And so it went back to the county clerk to give the elections administrators a chance to begin with. But the elections are getting more difficult.
I will tell you, I cannot focus being in that office.
Say up there, just in case it does get abolished.
But you know, these are, because it's, we can do it, set it with that, and then if we need to change it in the future, in a year or two years, we can change the location of it.
Yeah.
As far as office space.
Right, and I'm thinking here for now.
Yeah.
Right. And I'm thinking here for now, yeah, see how this legislative session goes, and by then we'll be further along with EMS. And the treasurer is constitutional office, election office isn't. That's why statewide voting was for Galveston. It's in the constitution. It's constitutional. My thought is go ahead and go forward and there's a way to turn it off. That code to get in?
Yes.
I, I think we should go forward with it for now. I hate to stop for a possibility. And we'll see where the legislature stands on that. We'll see if that bill comes up, and if we do, we can advocate against it if that's something that we disagree with, or we can advocate for it if we do agree with it. So we'll have a better understanding of where the election administrator office stands at that point, and how, how it is for us being separated out. We have, we have anything in March? Anything at all?
Not till next November. Well, I think this November, then the next November.
I didn't think we did. I knew there weren't any primaries, but I didn't know.
Unless there's some other entity.
Like cities or schools in May.
So we'll know how that one goes when it comes around.
Does the motion need to be made according to your letter, or does it matter?
I don't, I, I think if we just.
Just approve the order for election administrator. Okay, I make a motion that we approve the order creating the election administrators office designation of, and designation of office space being in the county clerk's office at this time.
Okay, now we have the order of appointment for election judges and alternates.
Yeah, we kind of let this slide the last couple of years. We're supposed to be doing it. We used to do it all, every year, every two years, and we kind of let it slide, so we're gonna got reminded of it, so we have to get it done.
The ones that are on there have worked as election judge since I've been here. Few have, I've changed a few because some have been working, but these election judges have worked as election judge prior to this election. And all of them have worked at least one election. For the election judge and the alternate. Then I will have a third person at each polling locations beside, no, they will all have three per polling location. But I only have to get those two approved.
Now the rest will be just workers. And we have contacted them and they have said, okay, we hadn't just thrown them under the bus. They have agreed.
I'll make the motion to approve the order of appointment for election judges and alternates. And I've got that printing. I'll go get that printed in a minute. And this is worded holiday part-time pay. However, after some discussion with auditor and treasurer, we're gonna be a little bit different on that. So we have found that there are times when part-time employees do out work on holidays. You'll have a pool, the senior center, a lot, parks, every Fourth of July. And most of those are, are part-time, and the golf course has worked some occasion on some holidays. So for those employees, working on an actual holiday, they just get straight time. We were wanting to discuss, or discuss whether you wanted to, basically, it'd be an incentive if they, which wouldn't be all the time to work on holidays. If a regular part-time employee does work on that day, if you wanted to pay them time and a half or double time on those dates that they work. Like I said, senior center is there almost every holiday. Of course, they have to do the meal delivery. Parks, they're part-time people work on the Fourth of July and things like that. Now, I don't see it being a huge cost.
Not, I mean, cause they're not usually open a whole lot, it's not like a skeletal crew, except for probably, I mean, the golf course and park. I mean, cause there's more of them, obviously, and they do bigger kind of events. But it's just so, I mean, everyone else is off, and it helps us cause a full-time employee is off. So we kind of do save some there for having the part-time there.
So if you have an employee that's making fifteen dollars an hour, it's seven fifty per hour additional that they would make. And if you have, it wouldn't be ten, but if you had ten, you're looking at seventy-five dollars per hour, or that plus whatever. Or anything y'all want to add to it?
The state of Texas is a naturopile area, so it really, it just says, go by your personnel policy. So full-time people who work, who do work holiday, most of our people have holidays off, but sheriff, EMS, whatever, they get double time for that. And they're a lot more expensive to pay for that than it is for a part-time person who's making twelve, fifteen dollars an hour. So it can mitigate some of the costs that way as well. But it also is an incentive to get some of them part-time people, hey, yeah, I work every holiday you got.
Well, and it's not saying that the department has to be open on that holiday, but, I mean, they are, and, you know, so if they are open, then that kind of, yeah.
Like the library is not normally open on holidays. The Boys and Girls Club is not open on holidays, or the youth center. I mean, it's like the, the golf course, the parks, the senior center.
Senior center.
That type. It really probably wouldn't change EMSs because they're on a shift rate kind of thing anyways. Theirs is all wacky anyway, so.
Or sheriff, yeah, cause they're on a different, but kind of.
I can see, I can see the youth center on occasion, when the school is open for holiday, they usually don't stay open for those.
It would be one of our listed holidays.
Right, one of our listed holidays.
There's a theme that we're open, that we're closing the school.
Texas Independent State, is that one of the days?
Flag Day or something.
Yes.
But like, well, yesterday, when it was flooding and you had your part-time or whatever, I mean, it is a holiday, and if you called them in, then it would benefit them also as well. I mean, for them to go out and, I don't know, I don't know a lot about London Bridge, it codes out, so.
To my answer out here, so.
Okay, well, it would affect that because they worked on a holiday. Now handle that. It's only moving forward, but for the future.
So this should just be a amendment to our.
To our part-time.
I don't know whether to go in our.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Policy.
Policy.
Yes, sir.
And if you, for a regular part-time employee, correct?
Yes.
What do you call this? Full part-time?
Kind of.
Yeah, there's another term for it. Permanent.
It's, it would just say part-time.
Just part-time.
Department of Labor laws.
Just a temporary. Can you call it temporary?
You can call them seasonal or temporary, but you can't call them full-time, part-time, or permanent part-time.
Because then it, I think it gets certain benefits.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that a regular part-time employee that works on a holiday.
Second. Hold the paper.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Back on the elections administrator, when are we gonna do applications?
I am going to set a meeting.
You'll set a meeting for that? Okay, alright.
In the next week or two, we'll do that, so we can go ahead and get that rolling.
Is that effective immediately or next year?
The part-time? Effective.
Yep.
Immediately. Yep. Does everybody agree with immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Hey, SB twenty-two, court to vote on the application for acceptance of, acceptance of this twenty twenty-five SB twenty-two funds for sheriff's department, county, and district attorney offices. We have to accept those funds, or accept, we have to vote on applying and accepting the funds. They, we did that last year, and that's one of the requirements. I think the money's been well spent this year, and they will continue that, and we'll take the state's money, is my thought.
The application for us opens up November second, so we have to have this stuck in process before that opens up. And all the sheriff, the county, the sheriff, the DA, and do you apply for the county attorney, or is the county attorney?
I think they changed it to where the county attorney applies for this year.
But it'd be the three departments, but it still goes under county funds and still is under audited. It's gonna cause another single file audit. Yay. But it's more money, so.
Could you make a motion that we accept the application for, and acceptance of the twenty twenty-five SB twenty-two funds for sheriff's department, county, and district attorney's offices?
Second. Hold the paper. And if I'm remembering right, we don't have to have a resolution or anything, we just need to show in a minute that. Purchase the golf cart shed for golf course. We've got, thank you, Terry, for providing that. A document that shows what it'll cost to purchase a, I'll let Terry describe.
This would eliminate the use of the golf cart sheds that were being utilized at this point for storing those that we rent, or purchase in the future. And so therefore, because you're always looking, right, Bill, for, I mean, there's always somebody that was, or wanting cart sheds.
Yes.
And so this would be twelve, I believe you said, and would add about six hundred dollars a month to the revenue. And so if we have our cart shed, this, this particular cart shed is twenty-five by, or twenty-four by forty-five, and it would actually house twenty carts. We've already been told in previous courts that they run out rental carts all the time. And so we can't, I think sixteen was all we could handle. We're looking at twenty. We weren't gonna do twenty because of that, no, no place to put them. And so the cart shed rentals alone will pay for this in a pretty short period of time, as well as having more carts to rent is also going to help in paying for this. And, Bill, do you have anything you want to add?
Well, I left up there for all of you to look at this, just this through August, just our cart rentals, eighteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars, ninety-nine cents. So the paper's shedding less than a year. And then the revenue generated from the ability to rent the existing empty sheds would be just gravy on top of that.
And so this shed.
And we wanted it to be large enough to add more carts for twenty-six.
Okay. Do you think this, this one will be big enough for that?
According to our math, twenty-two carts, that's what I'm math.
And so this shed would have roll-up doors front and back, so that carts coming in would not hinder those going out. And it would be placed by, close to the pro shop, I believe y'all decided that would be the best place, so it'd be close to electrical power, lights, or anything in the future. It's completely enclosed, hundred, a hundred mile-per-hour winds. I talked to the county attorney as well, and he agreed that this is not something that, that needs to be engineered by an architect or someone like this. He said this is more like a portable shed. It does have vertical walls, which costs a little bit more than the horizontal walls, but you've got a lot more strength there. And so it's something I believe that we should go ahead and purchase so that we're able to get these, the things going up. Get this in place in the next two or three months, and, and be able to utilize it, and actually produce more revenue for the, for the golf course. So what's the difference in this one that we discovered, this one that's on our? They're, they're just different bids. It's, I mean, same, same as far as everything. Same, same, exact same.
No, it did attach.
Do we have a line that we, where we charge for storage now?
It goes under, all in the same line. It's not different to that. I think that was what I was just thinking, we're gonna have to like start, there needs to, cause there's a cart shed rentals, then there's, it all kind of goes together in our stuff.
So it's under the eighteen-hole cart and the nine-hole cart?
That's square. That's, it's set it differently.
So it needs to be part of our motion if we do this, to where we set another line?
No, I, I do that.
Those, the material you got are the fees we've collected so far, for just if somebody rents a cart for nine.
That is for the cart, so we have, we don't have anything that we're actually charging right now for storage.
Yes.
There are, there is, but it's not on the square, cause they pay it within their membership fees, so it's built into that.
Okay, okay.
If they rent a cart shed.
Is this something that, do we need to go out for bids on this?
No. It's way below fifty.
Okay.
It would be an improvements fund.
Is it a temporary, is it a, is it a shed?
But if we take.
So do we need to put in a budget then, rather than paying?
Do you have a, like, is there a picture of it, so I can see, cause I can tell you if it's gonna go onto our building insurance. If it goes onto building insurance, that it can be permanent improvement. If it goes onto a property insurance, then it, it can't be built. It has to be a different way around because of their specifications for that.
There are pictures of it.
Cause we do have some storage buildings on our property. I think that would go on property. Something like that is a.
Is that kind of what it, but?
Yeah. I don't think the doors would be in the end.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have some of those type buildings on our property insurance, so it would, it could go to permanent improvements. And then would go to the, add the value of the asset of the golf course.
My only issue with it is we have spent a lot of money on my golf courses here.
But we, in order to pay that back, you have to produce more revenue, and this would produce more revenue. And once it's paid off, it continues to produce that, that six hundred dollars a month just for the sheds that are being used for rental carts right now would be six hundred dollars a month extra revenue. And then your extra carts would also be additional revenue, so you have to spend money to make money. And this is one of those times where I used for a settlement.
I just, actually, I just think like we spend a lot of money out there, and I don't.
It's, it's been neglected for a long time.
It is.
Out of those, how many of those will be the ones that are rented, and how many of them will be for the ones that are helping, holding the carts that we're? carts that we're leasing? Is it all going to be just our leased carts or will there be some that will be rented to the public, the shed space?
So you, you free up twelve carts, twelve cart sheds, then you wouldn't.
Where they currently are right now. So they would just come out of those. So you would add those twelve to there. How much do you rent those a month for?
Fifty.
Hence the six hundred. Right now?
That's what I say, dude.
I think that's coming up.
Has a new discussion.
No doubt to make a motion that we allow the golf course superintendent to order the twenty-four by forty-five by eight storage building for the storage of rental carts. Before we, what about electricity too? Because y'all are going to go out there, it's dark sometimes, y'all going there and.
Yeah, tournament days where we're all wearing headlamps to do things because there's no lights and need to move them around. So there was, electricity would be great. Is, is it completely necessary? No, but it sure would help watch for snakes and things like that.
It is, but the side, the pro shop, so there is power there.
The power should be very nearby.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a giant hardship or.
And which one are you recommending? This one or the one we have down here?
Whichever one. I, they may be the same one. I, I got two, three different.
Same price.
Okay.
Or the same, same machine. Two different prices, but same, same building. And I don't remember what the difference was.
One had a one hundred mile per hour guarantee, one had a ninety mile per hour guarantee.
I'd say that a hundred?
Yeah, a hundred mile per hour would be.
What is, what is the price?
Would get the straight winds, sixteen.
Sixteen thousand?
Looking at number two. The ones I've talked to said that they would actually be able to put them up relatively quick. With this weather, we love it, but it's going to be a little bit longer. And precinct one is going to take some of the millings there and build a path to put it on. So it will be, have a good platform to put on. They'll put in three-foot anchors.
Proving for, going to use them for parking lot out there.
Is that what you're going to do? Okay. Well, I guess we are against them first.
I'll go ahead and second. All in favor? All those? Does that four against, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay, so we got Terry with the judge, four and one.
All right, move on to approve stop sign at the intersection of CR eleven thirty-seven and.
Okay, so giving calls that we're running yield signs. People coming around the curve there where East Creek is, there on the north end, where eleven thirty-seven begins. And so I told them that we would bring it to court and simply couldn't put stop signs up. I think there is one stop sign there. But we do have a yield sign that needs to go and put stop signs in place.
You talking at the. Right there, the east facing traffic coming on to the.
Right, I'm looking at the. Right there where your percher is, there. Up there, Terry.
There's a yield there and then the yield up above.
Yeah. So where the pin is.
No, that's a, there's no, there's no stop sign that way. That's, the, the yield and stop sign are there on either corner thereof that triangle.
So it would be for westbound and southbound traffic off up here?
Okay, that's correct. Okay. So I make a motion that we are able for increasing one foot stop sign there to get traffic to stop rather than run through. Yield sign.
All in favor? Annual county fees changes for twenty twenty-five. We're, county will charge same fees in year twenty twenty-five. And this is for DMV. And Jana needs this back. So and she didn't recommend any changes. And then the other option is commissioner's court has approved fee changes, the road and bridge, child safety fee, transportation fee. And that's for those would be us. Like I said, Jana's not recommending any changes.
She's not recommending it. No, it was true.
Congratulations.
All in favor? Now moving on to financials, do certified revenues.
And this is to certify the revenue received back from Texas Parks Wildlife Grant on the pump track, right? I don't know what that thing's called out there.
And other work?
Yes, out there, hit the parks. Total, we had received seventeen thousand, two ninety-two fifty already, and then we received another seventy-five thousand, seven forty-seven sixty-three, which is total of ninety-three thousand, forty dollars and thirteen cents. There will be a budget amendment being placed to place that into twenty-nine six six oh five oh one oh, the Texas Park recreational grant expense line. There should be some work coming on that because there's more expenses than that, but that's for that.
Make a motion to certify the revenues from Texas Park Recreation Grant as presented.
Second. All in favor? Much so, there will be more coming. Approval of line item transfers and budget amendments.
Okay, there are three line item transfers and one budget amendment. First line item transfer is maintenance department and utilities, four thousand, out of part-time uptick of use and prices. That's his explanation. Youth Center, janitorial supplies, one thousand, out of other equipment, prices have gone up. Airport capital outlay, twenty-one thousand, nine twenty-two fifty, out of runway maintenance. This was to purchase to purchase the beacon and replace the intensity LED beacon and instruction lights. It's also on, what could be submitted on the ninety-ten ramp grant. So we will be receiving ninety percent of that back. And then the budget amendment is permanent improvement line. It is the Texas Park Wildlife Grant, recreational grant, ninety-three thousand, forty dollars and thirteen cents. So they just certify.
Motion would be line item transferred or approved line item transferred.
All in favor? Council.
Council's payables, one million, four hundred and eighty-one thousand, six twenty-six, zero one.
All in favor? All right, we are not having an executive, executive session. We will now be adjourned, but I'll wait just a minute. I redid it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. Bill, she says she put those copies in your box.
Thank you very much. I'm afraid you'll hear the golf course as of this morning, three point five.